Well, welcome and welcome to the Thursday, July ninth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Planning Board. I do have a script I need to read for remote, me, uh, remote meetings. So as a preliminary matter, this is Stephen Blueay, Chairman of the Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated in the agenda are present and hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Rota Lake.
President.
Mr. Jerry.
President.
Mr. Thomas.
President.
Uh, Mr. Gordon is absent today and Mr. Boulay is present. Uh, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Uh, Mr. Cahill. Bernie, a muted. You want to say that again, Bernie? Whoa. Zone her off. Uh, looks like he might have connection issues. He is here. Mr. Truman, are you in attendance? Alright, he may be coming in a bit later. Okay, so good evening. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting of the Planning Board will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by video conference through via Google Hangout as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer unless asked by the chairperson or the staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name provide any comment or questions. I will then pop upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second, please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. To mute and unmute your telephone, dial star six. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to present, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered while you're speaking or background noise. To mute and unmute your telephone, dial star six. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. After your presentation, members of the board will be given the opportunity to ask questions. After the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the chair, chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If numbers wish to engage in clugrake or among with each others, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. With that being said, we are up for the first item on the agenda, which is the organization of the board. Do I hear any motions to nominate someone to be chair, vice chair and clerk?
I, I move the slate of, uh, Stephen Boulay as, uh, chairman, myself as vice chairman and Joseph Thomas as the clerk.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
Uh, in favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. Thank you. Our next item of business is to approve minutes. We have no minutes to discuss this particular meeting. Following item is to review and sign bills. I have one bill from Graves Engineering for three fourteen Grafton Street Site Plan Review Number Two for two hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. Do I have emotion?
I move that we authorize the expenditure as read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. At this point, I will go around for board member comments, uh, Mr. Rota Lakus.
No comments this month, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jerry.
I also have no comments this month. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
No comments this month, sir.
And the chair has no comments this month. This brings us to our first meeting and hearing. Our first hearing is a new public meeting for new commercial building administrative site plan review, location twenty-seven Pine Dell Road. Mr. Cahill, would you like to introduce the applicants?
Uh, certainly, so, um, this is a commercial proposal on twenty-seven Pine Dell Road. Um, as the chair mentioned, this is an administrative site plan review. So what we are looking for as we have in the past couple of months with these is just any comments or recommendations that the board may have for the, um, zoning enforcement officer and building inspector, who actually signs off on administrative site plan reviews. There was a letter that was shared with you from, um, the town engineer, Andy Truman dated June, uh, excuse me, June, not January, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Um, my only recommendation was simply to the board, um, if you do not have any, uh, additional comments or recommendations to at, uh, at minimum, I think, recommend that the applicant address the issues as raised by the town engineer in his letter. And that was all I had for this one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Do we have any questions? I'll start with Mr. Rota Lakus.
This has come before us before I recall, correct?
I believe, I believe that is correct back in, um, two thousand, I want to say early two thousand and sixteen before my arrival in town. Um, Andy had some additional comments, uh, to that original application. So we're just trying to cover our bases here by having them, um, it doesn't cost anyone anything for administrative site plan. Um, so basically Andy's noticed a few extra things that he'd like to have sorted out before the applicant moves forward.
I'm okay recommending the site plan with the comments and conditions that, uh, Mr. Truman has noted.
Mr. Jerry, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Mr. Thomas.
Do you have any? On right now, sir.
Okay. Um, I do not have any comments either. Um, I would entertain a motion to recommend that the applicant address the issues as raised by the town engineer in a memo to the Planning Board dated June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
I, I would recommend that we approve the site plan with the conditions as set forth by, uh, Mr. Truman and his memo.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. So we will recommend that to the appropriate body. Our next item of business is a new public meeting for a new retail and office buildings request for de minimis change, location two seventy-four Walnut Street, Unit One. Mr. Cahill.
I believe the applicants are here. If you are here, could you please, um, address the chair, introduce your, uh, name and then describe, um, what it is the, uh, de minimis changes about?
Uh, my name is Dan Allen, um, here with Bowler and on behalf of the applicant, um, as the civil engineer on the proposed two seventy-four Walnut Street project. The proposed. The proposed project, um, was originally approved in November of two thousand and nineteen and was also approved for a de minimis change this past April for, um, relocation of the proposed trash enclosure. Since that time, the applicant has made the decision to, for a minor change, the proposed office and medical building, in which they are proposing to reduce it from two to one stories. Um, as, as you can see on the plan, uh, is the plan up? Are you guys able to see that? Just wanted to confirm.
I do not, I, Mr. Cahill, are you allowing him to share his screen?
Um, you should be able to share. My screen is saying not responding at the moment, so I've got a bit of a technical hiccup here.
Yeah, it should be, sorry about that.
That's better.
Now you're presenting.
All set? Sorry about that, guys. Um, okay, so we're here for the, uh, so as I stated, this was originally approved in November of two thousand and nineteen and had also been approved for a de minimis change for the trash enclosure location in April. The change the applicant is opting for now is just a minor change to the proposed office and medical building, to which it will be reduced from two to one stories. Uh, as you can see on this plan shown in red are the proposed plan changes, um, involved with the building. And it's just shown overlaid on the previously approved plan. In addition, so with the reduction in number of stories, the entrance to the building is being relocated from the northern side of the building to the east side. And originally it was a single entrance and will now, the building will now have two separate entrances, one for each tenant. Um, and rear access will also be provided on the west side of the building. Some minor site changes to, um, accommodate the proposed building change include relocating the eighty-eight parking stalls from the, when the entrance was on the north side to now the east side of the building and also a proposed sidewalk on the west side for access to those rear doors. There's no proposed changes to the parking count, site circulation or building locations. We feel that the change is relatively minor and straightforward, but would opt for any questions if, uh, anybody has any on this.
Thank you. Um, I'll go around the board. Uh, Mr. Rota Lakus, do you have any questions or comments?
I have no questions or comments.
Mr. Jerry.
I know questions or comments.
Mr. Thomas.
No, it seems pretty straightforward. I have no questions or comments.
I agree that it looks fairly straightforward and I don't have any questions or comments either. So would, uh, there be a motion to find the proposed changes to be de minimis in nature and approve said changes?
I, I would make a motion that we make a finding that, that proposed changes to the two seventy-four Walnut Street, Unit One Site Plan are de minimis and that, uh, we recommend approval of the changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Boulay is in favor. You are good to go, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, our next item of for business is a continued public hearing for Wyman Farms Site Plan Modification. Location nine thirty-five Main Street. Mr. Cahill.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr..
I believe, I believe John, excuse, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I believe John Grenier is here to represent the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Grenier.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Wyman Farm, um, this is John Grenier. I am the engineer on the project and, um, the continued hearing i- is for, uh, a minor modification that includes the shifting of one duplex building, uh, at the rear of the property. That would be. And also for the, uh, the as-built condition, uh, of the location and some grading for the evergreen screening at the rear of the property, um, along the sewer line easement that, um, is along the perimeter, uh, again, at the rear of the property. Bernie, if you could put up the plan, I ca- I can go through it in a little bit more detail if, if that's, that's.
It is, it is, it is, I am sharing it now, John, so can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yes. The only person.
It is, John, it is up.
Okay, um, I personally can't see it, but I'm not sure why.
Right now it's simply highlighting the, um, portion that you just spoke about, the duplex unit and the highlights on the top of the slope behind wall three. So that's the area we're zoomed in on.
So yeah, the units in question, they're, they're shown in red. Um, it was a shift of about four feet for units twenty-nine and thirty-one. Um, the, the, at one corner, the closest point, uh, it's a little bit greater than ten feet apart, um, to the adjacent building. And the purpose of that was to, uh, provide a little bit more, um, area at the rear of the unit. So we shifted it a little bit just for where the, uh, the, the sunroom is in the back, uh, just so you can get around the rear of, rear of that building a little bit easier. And, uh, as far as the location of the evergreens, um, when the landscaper was installing those, um, in order to provide adequate area for the root balls, he did shift those back a little bit, um, so that there wouldn't be any issues with the root balls and, and make sure that the, the evergreens would in fact, uh, grow and, and thrive. Um, they did also, when they were up there in, you know, with the machine doing a little bit of grading, there was a little bit additional mounding. Um, and I believe that was requested so that with a little bit of mounding at the, uh, in the area of the evergreens, that would provide a little bit, um, a little better buffer and, and, and mounding and screening, uh, for the abutters. So that was the rationale behind those, those two modifications. And, uh, originally there was a, um, a, a, basically a, a French drain, uh, over at, behind a couple of the units. Um, that French drain or, or French drain is, is being removed. So that is not going to be, that's not part of this, uh, request for modification any longer. So with that, I'd put it to the chair with, uh, any questions or comments from the board or staff.
Um, so I, I, that's new information to me, John, as far as the last portion that you put that you're taking that away from the overall. So the site plan modification, um, given the fact that there is still an issue ongoing with that retaining wall, I'm going to suggest that we, we handle this a little bit differently so the public understands is, we, I think we'll take a look at the two portions that we talked at the beginning, which is wall number three and the adjustment of those two structures. And, um, I would like to suggest to the board that we continue the remainder of the hearing to give us time to address the issues going on with wall number one, um, on that portion of the property. Does that make sense to the rest of the board? Uh, Mr. Jerry.
Yeah, I, I think that, that makes a lot of sense. I think that's a great way to handle it.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
I have no issue with that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Grenier, are you in agreement with that?
Uh, yeah, so just so, um, it's being continued, uh, of the two items regarding the location of the trees and the location of the unit. Is that portion of the amendment, uh, is, is there a way to get approval for that portion of it?
And I'd, I'd like to go down that road if we can this evening. We can discuss handling those two pieces of this, um, deal with that, whether we approve or deny going forward from there and then keep the hearing open for the remainder of that wall number one.
Yeah, that sounds fine, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. So that being said, um, do I have any questions from the board? Uh, first of all, do we have any comments from the town engineer, Mr. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Oh, my God.
Truman.
Thank you, I just, Mr. Truman, do you have any comments that you wish to share?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I say we, we issued a memo regarding our, um, initial recommendations, you know, for the site modification because obviously the trees and the grading are in the town easement, but we are, we are happy with those. I think, you know, the applicant is of the understanding that, you know, if and when we, the unlikely event, we have to go in and replace that sewer, that we would not put the trees back and it would be under the responsibility of the condo association at that time. But other than that, we are all set with the modifications on that side of the site.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Cahill, do we have any other, um, planning, um, questions or comments that came up relative to the other retaining wall?
Um, we don't at this time. It is ongoing and I'm expecting to receive an updated, a, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? An updated plan for how the developer is going to deal with the retaining wall, retaining wall number one over towards the Rosano property. Um, hoping to receive that in the next day or two, business day, um, which will give us some, hopefully some guidance on the way forward and how it will go. But I think because of that, because it remains outstanding on that side of the project, I think you are correct, Mr. Chairman and members of the board to, um, continue the meeting, at least that portion of the meeting, uh, the public hearing, if you will, to wait to see how that's resolved, what changes might take place because we just don't know right now. So I think it's the prudent thing to do is to keep that open. However, I also agree that I think, uh, the choice to move ahead to approve these, um, approve or not approve, but certainly to make a decision about the, what's happening behind wall number three, um, with the slope and the grading into the easement and the landscaping is also, I think it's satisfactory. Um, I did want to just mention that it's not actually wall number three itself. The wall itself is not changing to wall number three that we're discussing. It's the, um, slope was graded into the, um, easement and there was some landscaping as, uh, Mr. Grenier pointed out at the top. So just to be clear on that, and then we're talking about the, um, that, that slight shift in the, um, the units and I forget the unit numbers, but, um, those are also at play. So I just want to make all that clear. And, um, again, I think, I think it's wise that the board keep the public hearing open for the, um, the wall number one side of this discussion.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I will ask the board members if we have any questions or comments, start with, uh, Mr. Jerry.
I know all my comments were addressed by, uh, Mr. Truman's, uh, comments. As long as the town's comfortable with, with those trees and the slope change and easement, then, uh, that answers my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I have no more questions or comments right now, sir.
Okay, and I do not have any questions or comments relative to these particular items. This is a public hearing. If there are members in the public that wish to be heard, I will first ask that you chime in and leave, uh, give me your name and address. And after I get a list of, um, people who wish to speak, I will then call back upon you to speak.
Yes, my name is Paul George. Twenty Vice Street, about at ten north.
Is there any other who wish to speak today?
Yes, um, I, my name is, uh, Michael Kenefik. I represent, uh, Lisa and Michael Rosano of five, Bonnie Dell Lane.
Okay, is that Kenefit?
Uh, Kenefik, I C K.
I C K, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Is there anyone else in attendance who wish to be heard? Okay, I'm going to take that as, these are two speakers. Um, so I, I guess I will start with, uh, Mr. Kenefik first. Could you please address your questions to the chair?
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I just had a couple of, uh, questions. When we, uh, checked in tonight, we were hoping to get a little bit more information about wall number one, uh, because it, about a hundred and ten feet of it, uh, abuts, uh, Mr. Rosano's property. Uh, and I think as the board is aware, uh, it's started leaching as early as April this year, uh, and it looks to be, uh, becoming more and more of an issue. So there's a concern, I guess, uh, on Mr. Rosano's part, a legitimate concern that there could be a washout, especially now that I think we're under, uh, flood watch of, uh, for this weekend. Uh, and there's, there's an oak tree that, uh, could be impacted there. So I was just wondering, uh, I understand you already stated that the, uh, there would be a plan submitted in the next day or two, but I was hoping through you, Mr. Chairman, uh, whether or not the applicant could say, uh, when they would anticipate. And I know this is, you know, it would ob- obviously have to be, um, approved by the board, but when they would anticipate, uh, repairs starting to be made to the wall. Uh, Mr. Rosano's concern, uh, you know, about the safety issue, uh, the status of that oak tree that I just mentioned.
I, I, I think I'll try to answer that question and I may ask for, for more clarity from someone else on the, on the, the staff here.
Yes.
Be- because, um, the, there is no clear answer at this moment and we're waiting for more documentation and that will need to be reviewed and we have a peer reviewer, reviewer that will be going through that as well.
Yes.
Um, I think it's un, it's unlikely that we're going to have a definitive answer for you at this moment. I agree with you that the, the wall is a concern. It's a concern for everyone here, um, certainly on this board. And I can tell you that it's not going to be ignored. It's, it's, it's trying to be addressed and it's being addressed as, uh, expeditiously, expeditiously as possible.
Okay.
Is anybody on the town staff wish to expand on that at all?
Steve, I think you covered most of it. Um, like I said, uh, the, I'm awaiting a plan and I hopefully will get it in the next couple of days, uh, business days. But, uh, to what the chair said is we have a peer reviewer who is under, uh, contract with the Planning Board in the town to review any, uh, wall plans that get submitted. So before anything gets built or moves forward, it's going to have to get the okay, the green light from our peer reviewer first. So what we're doing now, the way it's going to work now, the process is we're waiting for the plan from the developer. How are you going to address the wall issue? Uh, we noticed damage on it a couple of months ago. That's why we started this process. Are you going to repair it? Are you going to replace it? Are you going to do something else? Uh, that plan's going to be given to us. Our peer reviewer is going to review it. There needs to be a back and forth. There will be a back and forth. But once the peer reviewer gives the green light, our peer reviewer, who's a working on behalf of the town, then the developer can move forward with whatever it is. Again, I don't know what it is because I haven't got the plan yet. Repair, replace, what have you. That will then be constructed and the, um, engineer for the project will have to submit a signed affidavit to the building department saying it was constructed in accordance with the plan. I can say that the developers as eager as everyone else to get this fixed. Regardless of how it happened, um, I know that they are eager. They have two units completed on that side. They're looking for, uh, certificates of occupancy and some closing dates on those. So they are eager to get this wall fixed up and approved, um, as soon as possible. So we're dealing with that side of the project and that is also why I've, um, recommend and I, and I agree with the chair of the board that, that, that side of the site plan modification needs to be continued. I don't think it would be wise to close at this time on that. However, there are other aspects of the project that are not related whatsoever to this wall, to wall number one, the, um, the wall closest to the Rosano property that, um, have no bearing on it. And I think it's, it makes rational sense to, to consider those separately from this issue. Certainly, there's not going to be any movement on the duplexes along wall number one. Uh, there's not going to be any building permits or COs issued for those units at this time. That's not to say the board can't take action on other units far, much farther away from this wall, um, and not impacted by it. So that's kind of where we're at tonight and you can absolutely call my office in a couple of days to see about those plans if you wish.
Okay, um, I, I know we're speaking in hypotheticals. However, uh, best case scenario, uh, you get this on for your next meeting. Would that be in two weeks or four weeks from now?
Uh, four weeks.
Four weeks, okay. Uh, I think that's the only two questions I had, or a few questions I had. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mr. George.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
You, uh, heard my concerns at our last meeting. And, uh, I was just wondering how this came about of the trees being moved and the elevations being changed. Seeing that the trees originally were planted and they were there for a year and then they were changed. I was wondering why they were changed and what was the reason for it?
I'll ask, uh, Mr. Truman, do you have any background information on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't know why they were moved or we know is that they were moved originally on the original site plan, they were shown halfway up the slope. Um, I think, as with many construction projects, you know, what's on paper and what's in the field tend, tend to diverge a little bit. So when you actually start grading the site, I think the slope was maybe a little different than when they expected. So the top of the slope ended up in a slightly different area. Um, I think it makes more sense to have the trees at the top for a screening perspective. I think when they were proposed on the original site plan, um, made no sense, but we said, you know, we didn't instructed the developer to do it, but they, they may be able to answer the question as to why they were moved up the hill.
But bottom line is the town, the town has no particular issue with the trees.
We have no issue, we have no issue with those on this. No, they, they really don't impact easement as they're currently shown.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Can I also ask another question?
Sure thing.
Um, the elevation on the plan showed four hundred and twenty. The elevation on the plan showed 420. And that was along the side of the easement. I was wondering why that was changed also.
I don't know. Mr. Truman, do you have any?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it's just, you know, what's on paper and what's in the field, survey, probably existing condition survey wasn't quite, you know, this grades were slightly off and then when they did the grading, it was probably just, they have to, they have to tie into an existing grade. So probably just, you know, diminished was changes grading in the field. It's not uncommon.
We've spent a whole year on site plan approval. And this is what was approved and now all of a sudden it's changed. I mean, it was planted. It was all established for a year and all of a sudden now you're saying they made a mistake in the field. I mean, something had to have been done when we were going for site plan approval.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to interject a little bit here, Mr. George. So
Go ahead, Steve.
The, the, when, when the work is being completed, we, we do not have people out in the field measuring every single step that goes on. And we're generally dealing with as-built conditions. So typically things will be found as far as my understanding, and that's where these minimalist changes will come into effect to offset so that the, the as-built plan matches. I think overall, the plan or the site plan that was approved in the site as it currently sits in that particular spot is reasonably close to one another. It's not egregiously off. So I think this does definitely fall into the, we, we, sometimes we have to deal with there's some minor things that change and we kind of, we find them and then we correct them, whether it's through documentation or other, other means. In this case, I don't know that it was that egregious of a mess.
Okay, could I ask you another question? In regards to the one and a half to one slope, who gives the reassurance that that slope is one and a half to one, that was approved on site plan?
The, the, the engineer that created the plans, I believe, is the one that has to sign off on the final site plan. So that will be evaluated and stamped by the approving engineer of the project.
Can we have possibly some type of peer review engineer to oversee that, to make sure it is done instead of once everything is built, finding out that it's wrong?
I can ask Mr. Cahill if that's a normal practice. I yet hear that as being something that has been requested in the past, Mr. Cahill. I don't know if you have any experience.
Except for something that is structurally a danger or considered something completely, what do you want to say, not aligned with the plans? And Andy might be able to speak with us more as an engineer. We have not done that as a practice in the past.
But wouldn't you think that that would should be a practice? Because a lot of things have happened down there and things have been changing constantly. They've given incorrect measurements of slopes. They've been changed. They've been, the slopes have been stripped down, put back again, and we don't have any recourse to make sure what he's doing is actually what's approved on the site plan.
I can, I can just answer it this way, Mr. George, that the engineer that will sign off on the as-built is putting their career at risk by signing this off. So I'm impressed in the fact that they will ensure that the site plan meets the as-built condition. And if it does not, they will come before us again and look for approval changes, a site plan approval changes to meet.
So would, so would we be guaranteed that that slope is gonna be one and a half to one? According to the site plan?
The site plan is requiring one and a half to one. That's what it will be measured at, and that's what the as-built plan will be stamped at.
Well, I'm just asking as a concerned citizen that we have site, peer review, just check the slope before anything else is done there to make sure that is a one and a half to one slope, just for our protection and for the protection of the people who are gonna be living down there. It is a safety problem. And just from the eye, I could tell right now it is not one and a half to one by going through the elevations and by the distance of the way that slope is pitched out to the finished grade.
Okay, your concerns are noted. We will keep that in mind. I'll certainly record it on this meeting. So I'm sure the town and town staff will be diligent in looking at that as the project continues.
But could I, can I be reassured that this will happen before anything is built down there?
The liability for the construction of a site plan is the developers and the developers alone. The town does not take liability for whether or not it's completed in accordance with the plan. We check that it is. But that's submitted by the licensed engineer, the professional engineer of the developer. And that's not just in this case, that's in every case. It's there, it's the engineer stamp that's put forward. It's not the town engineer stamp that's put forward verifying that it was built to plan. So if there is an issue, if something happens in the future, it's the liability of the developer and not on the town. And again, that's in every town and that's in throughout all of our projects in town.
I understand that. But I just want, I would just like to have as a tax paying person in town, some type of guarantee that this is gonna be monitored just for the safety of the people who are abutting this property and for the people who are gonna be living there. Cause a lot of things have happened down there and the town had to come down and check to make sure the trees were on the easement or not, and they found it was a violation. So I need some type of reinsurance that this is gonna be taken care of by the town to make sure he abide by what the site plan is approved by. I don't think that's asking for a law as a condition by the planning board.
So I can defer only to Andy Truman to talk about what procedures the Department of Public Works and the Engineering Division take when reviewing a project that's under construction. Andy, I don't know if you have any comments?
Yeah, I think you know it on the head. I mean, this is a private project. I mean, it is under site plan review by right, but it is a private development. I mean, the town does oversee construction on a day-to-day basis. You know, we have our inspector out there. He's not a surveyor. He's not gonna tell you whether slope is right or wrong. You know, we defer the engineer of record on these projects to certify at the end of the project, you know, that it was built according to the plan. That's industry standard practice.
So in other words, I have no guarantee that it, it will be checked. And it's up to the developer who has already changed plans consistently down there.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to have that be your final question and I'll try to answer it this way. So when the final plan set is given in, engineer stamps it as one and a half, one to one and a half, then that is what is of record. That final as-built plan has not been put in front of us yet. But that will be of record. And if it is incorrect, then I don't know where the recourse is or abutters at that point. But to Mr. Cahill and Mr. Truman's point, it's not a town project. We're relying upon the engineers and the the builders of these developments to do things as, as they are presented to us. So I'm, I'm sorry to say that I can't give you a definitive, yes, everything is gonna be exactly the way it is until the as-built plan comes before us.
Steve, could the as-built be done before any building is done?
No. I don't believe so.
There has been an as-built done already before.
Well, that I don't know. And again, I think we're, we're running around in circles on this one at this point. So I'm gonna ask that, that be your final question. And your concerns are certainly taken under advisement. And I believe the engineer of record on this project is well aware of what consequences may become if they stamp a project that doesn't meet the requirements as, as the as-built plan will come forward. Okay? Is there anyone else that has any question? Thank you. Is there any other questions from the audience? Okay, there being none. So I will entertain a motion to approve the grading and landscape change. I'm sorry, I should ahead of myself. Do I have any questions from, oh, actually, I already did the questions. Yes. So do I have a motion to approve the grading and landscaping changes at the top of the slope above, above wall number three is shown on the modified site plan with the revision date of May 1, 2020, and to instruct the town planner and building inspector to release building permits for units 29, 31, 35, 33, 34, and 36.
Was that your motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I said, is there a motion?
Oh, is there a motion?
I would make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor. In addition to that, I would entertain, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just interrupt. I don't believe you mentioned the adjustment of units 29 and 31. Could you, someone make a motion for that as well?
I did have that in there, Bernie, I believe. I said to Tom, plan of building inspector to release building permits.
Those are permits. No, the actual, the adjustment of units 29 and 31, I think it was three or four feet to the, I wanna say, west.
And that was 29, 31, correct. And I will amend my request for motion to also accept the minor changes for building locations of units 29 and 31. Do I have a second now?
Second on the amended motion from the chairman.
All in favor, Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor. I'll also entertain a motion to continue the remainder of the site plan modification to August 6th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. So the remainder of the meeting, the site plan is moved to next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grunier. Our next item of business is a continued public hearing for a day camp facility, site plan approval, Little Creek Realty Trust, location 314 Grafton Street. Mr. Cahill?
I believe Mr. Carl Holgren is here representing the applicant.
I am. Good evening.
Please introduce yourself and share your plan with us.
Sure. Actually, can I see my screen?
I don't know if Mr. Cahill is getting it for you.
I can put it up if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right.
So good evening. My name is Carl Holgren, I'm engineering. This is a continued public hearing. I was last in front of the board back in May. Since that time, we've submitted updated plans. That was back on June 12th. Included with those plans was a detailed breakdown of the parking as requested by the building inspector. Revisions to the plans included additional protection at the drain discharges and some other minor labeling revisions. Graves' engineering comments have been resolved. The building inspector has indicated that her comments have been addressed. Bernie's indicated that there's no outstanding planning issues, but I'll let him speak to that. The Conservation Commission closed their meeting on June 23rd. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, thank you. I'll go around the board. Mr. Rotalakis, any questions or comments?
I'm all set with this.
Okay, Mr. Jerry?
I'm also all set with this one.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
I'll sit right now, sir.
And I have no questions at this time either. This is, actually, it's a public hearing, so it is open for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? I will take that as a no. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move that we close the public hearing on the application for site plan approval, 314 Grafton Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor. I will entertain a motion to approve the site plan approval for 314 Grafton Street for the operation and construction of a day camp facility with the condition to restrict operation of the day camp from the Friday before Memorial Day to the last day of Labor Day weekend.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt. There's also a waiver request. You might have missed. It's for to not provide a photometric plan. So I just wanted to make sure that gets mentioned.
I thought that was drawn. I'm sorry. I must have missed that.
No, that's the other application you're thinking of. This one stayed in.
Yes, okay, thank you. Also to include the waiver for the photometric plan.
I would move that we authorize the chair, the clerk to execute a decision entitled, decision of the planning board regarding the application for site plan approval, 314 Grafton Street with the conditions just noted by the chair as well as the waiver of the photometric plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next new, our next hearing is a continued public meeting, I'm sorry, a public hearing for a new two-family dwelling site plan approval and special permits for Waverly Realty Trust, location 51 to 53 Bayview Drive. And sitting in on this meeting with us will be Mr. Perna Rao. Mr. Cahill?
I see the applicant names. It's Mr. Haddon and I'm trying to think, who else is here representing 51, 53? Is Phil Hannity?
Phil Hannity is not able to make tonight. Christopher Anderson, the Hannity engineer is here for it.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
For the record, Chris Anderson, Hannity engineer, here behalf of Waterview Realty Trust for the demolition and reconstruction of a two-family structure at 51, 53 Bayview Drive. The project was before the board a couple of months ago. Since that time, we have received comments back from engineering in the various town departments. And I've gone through our conservation review and having granted a order of condition from the commission for the work within the jurisdictional area. I'll do a quick review of the project and then follow up with modifications that have been made since then. Currently, the property does contain an existing structure. It's the intensity applicants to demolish said structure and associated utility features to the site. They construct a new two-family structure with access being maintained off Bayview Drive along with the associated utilities and whatnot. The preliminary changes have been made to the site plan since the previous hearing have been modifications of the foundation to include a foundation wall slash party wall between the two units. This party wall will extend from the lower floor all the way to the roof line, thus making the building compliant with the definition of a two-family structure as within the zoning bylaw. Some other modifications that, major modifications, which are general regrading around the building to help eliminate some retaining walls around the perimeter. And some of the additional reduction of the walls between the backside of the buildings and the lake. Other changes that were provided were response to the Conservation Commission's concerns and the engineering department review. That's the general, just the project. If there's any questions that we might have to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I'll go around the table. Mr. Rotalakis, any questions?
No, I, I think I'm all set with this application.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry?
No, I, I think they did a nice job addressing the concerns that we had from the last meeting. So I'm all set with this.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no concerns.
Mr. Rao, do you have any questions or comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, questions have been addressed from past meetings. Thank you.
And I agree that the, the questions have been addressed and I will echo Mr. Jerry's comments. I, I particularly like the, the elevations that are on the base Bayview Drive and the way that it leads down towards the back of the lake. I think it'll be a nice addition to the, to the, to the neighborhood. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Take that as a no. I will entertain a motion to close this hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the site plan approval and special permit for 51 through 53 Bayview Drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Rao?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. I will come up to, we do have two motions that'll be needed, one for site plan, a special, site pen and special permit for side-by-side dwelling and also it's for a special permit for the area ratio for a two-family dwelling to, by 10% from point three to point three-three. I'll entertain this motion.
I, I would propose two motions, one for the site plan approval and the related special permit for and the related special permit for the, uh, side-by-side duplex. And the other, uh, motion would, related motion as well would be the, uh, special permit for the floor area ratio.
I'm wondering, Steve, uh, Mr. Rotalakis, should we just do these independently? Can we just, let's just.
Why don't we do it independently? So the first motion I proposed would be, uh, for the, uh, site plan approval and the related special permit for the side-by-side, uh, duplex.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second? All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rao.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. And second motion for the special, on the special permit, Mr. Rotalakis.
I would move that we, uh, uh, approve the special permit for 51 to 53 Bayview Drive relative to the special permit needed for the, uh, floor area ratio.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rao.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. So you are all set, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Our next item of business is the proposed zoning bylaw changes for the annual town meeting. Um, I'm of the understanding that the annual town meeting will not be held this month. So I believe we would like to just keep this open, um, until our next scheduled meeting, because I do not believe that it'll, town meeting will happen prior to that. So we'll give another opportunity for the public to weigh in. While, while we await for a public comment, do we have anyone on the board that has any comments or questions relative to these articles that we've been discussing for several months now? Mr. Rotalakis.
Uh, no comments.
Mr. Jerry.
No comments.
Mr. Thomas.
No comments.
And I have no comments myself. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on either of these articles for proposed zoning bylaw changes? I'll take that as a no. We'll move on to our, um, actually, I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I would move that we, uh, continue the, uh, public hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw changes, uh, until, what is it, August?
Six.
Six, Thursday, August 6th, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. Okay, that brings us to new business. Mr. Cahill.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first order under new business is, um, the discussion of town meeting article 30, which is for the, um, adoption of the Community Preservation Act. Jason Molina, who's representing the CPA Committee, um, reached out to me to ask if the board would consider, um, recommending, well, weighing in on a recommendation, let's say, on whether or not the board, uh, excuse me, town meeting should or should not adopt, uh, the CPA, the Community Preservation Act. So, um, I brought this before the board's attention to have a discussion about it to see whether they wanted to offer a recommendation. Either way, yes, no, or, um, not going to offer one. So, at all, either way. So I will hand it back over to you.
Okay, now, thank you, Mr. Cahill. Um, I'll go around the board in a moment. I guess I'll start with my comments first. I, I have, um, a little bit of difficulty thinking that this, uh, falls under the planning board's purview of, um, a recommendation, um, simply because this is a tax implication, uh, vote is not a regulatory type of an item that normally the planning board would be dealing with. Um, that, of course, is just my opinion. I can be convinced otherwise. I'll, I'll listen to others, member of the members on the board. It's not to say that I'm either for or against. I just don't think it's in the, um, the purview of the planning board to weigh in on this matter. Go around, uh, Mr. Rotalakis.
No, I, Mr. Boulay, I agree with your assessment.
Okay, Mr. Jerry.
Uh, I also concur. It doesn't feel as though it's within the purview of this board.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
I also agree with your comments.
Okay, now, I, I do not believe that we need to do anything relative to this other than, uh, maybe get back to Mr. Molina, that the board, uh, how do you want to, how do you want to?
Um, I think it's probably, as a formality, worth it for the board to vote to not offer a recommendation either way. So I think, uh, to entertain a motion for that, I think would be certainly the polite thing to do and, um, covers our bases. So I, I think I would recommend to the board that someone make a motion to not offer a recommendation either way on article 30 of the town meeting order.
Okay, I agree. Uh, Mr. Rotalakis.
I, I would, uh, move that the, the planning board not issue a recommendation in one way or the other as to the, uh, article, uh, relative to the community preservation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I, there it is. It was the leg. It was kind of interesting. Uh, all in favor, Mr. Rotalakis.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
I am in favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Uh, next new business item is to discuss and vote on the issuance of a bond for 274 Walnut Street. My apologies. Um, uh, Mr. Cahill, I think I misplaced my paper. Can you, uh, describe that?
Yeah, certainly. This is for, um, well, the same project that was before us tonight for de minimis change. Uh, this bond is for 274 Walnut Street in the sum of $5,483.90.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the, uh, bond for 274 Walnut Street as explained by Mr. Cahill.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Our last item of business under new business is to discuss and endorse the WDR Planning Board and A&R Authorization Sheet. Uh, Mr. Cahill, please describe.
Certainly. So, um, you already took care of the first half of this when you voted on officers at the beginning of the meeting today. So you'll be getting a docu-sign, um, document to sign that one. We do this annually every year. This notifies the registry of deeds who are chair, vice chair, and clerk is for, um, the board, obviously, for the coming year. Um, this also, the most important part for here, though, is I would need your vote to authorize the town engineer to, um, have the, to grant him the power to have the, uh, to review and approve approval not required A&R plans. Um, going forward in Shrewsbury, the planning board has been doing this for many years. Uh, it was previously Jeff Howland, but going into this year, uh, since Mr. Howland has moved up to, um, the head of DPW, it's typically with the town engineer who is now Andy Truman. So this power would go to Andy Truman for the coming year. So pretty much it would be a motion to, um, designate the power to review and approve approval not required to the town engineer.
Do I have a motion, Mr. Rotalakis?
I move that we authorize the delegation of our authority to execute A&R plans, uh, to Mr. Truman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. I believe that is all that's on the printed articles for this evening, so, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. Thank you all and have a great evening.